You're so kind.
I know, we're out. Acting is secondary, that's where she makes her money.
We're going to get started, it's five o'clock. And we would recognize our media, Kim, Pivoy from Temple City Star and our good friend from Channel 32, thank you for being both there. And we recognize also our budget guru, sitting with Jeff.
A bunch of guru here.
So, thank you so much.
From our perspective, it's Brandon himself there.
And we need to recognize a new person, and maybe Sham if you want to come here, so at least the camera can see you.
There was a bit of both yourself.
This is Sham Simmons. Sham has been newly appointed to be our clerk, a communication clerk at the town. We've taken the place of Graham. And you come from Lethbridge, I understand? Is that where your roots are?
No, my roots are in B.C. I was working in Lethbridge at the University United College.
Oh, well, there you go. Thank you so much, and welcome, and all the best to you. Thank you.
The room will tell?
Yes.
Awesome. That's great.
Okay, so, Councilor Bantry, if you don't mind, do a prayer for us.
Our loving and kind Father in heaven, hallowed be thy name. We gather here tonight as a council, administration, and we ask that thy Spirit be here tonight and attend this meeting, that we be guided and directed in the things that are beneficial to our community and to those who live here. We ask that we have respect for one another in our discussions, and a disheathing, your made or for the benefit of the whole. These sins we ask word humbly, in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilor Bantry. We will now draw our meeting to order, so it's today, the 10th of November, and it's a regular council meeting. You have the agenda on the front of you, I do not have any addition to the agenda. Councilor, members?
I'm going to adopt the agenda.
All right. Any questions? Sign none. All in favor? Thank you. We do not have a delegation today, so we need to adopt the minutes of October 27, 2015, and the same day, the minute of the organizational meeting, so we need two motions.
I'm going to approve the minutes of October 27, council meeting.
Regular council meeting. Thank you. Any questions? No? All in favor? Thank you. Any more?
Okay, I will move to adopt the minutes of the organizational meeting of October 27, 2015.
All right. Any question regarding those minutes? Sign none. All in favor? Thank you very much. And we will now go to item seven, and we're going to give some time to administration to present the second draft of the budget for 2016 to 2018, as well as a capital budget 2016 to 2020. And this is just a matter of discussion on some items that might need a little bit more introspection. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, thank you. Council, you all have an 11 by 17 sheet again. Some of you have it in yellow and some of you have it in white. There is no difference, except we ran out of white paper. So, I apologize if I say something's highlighted blue or green for you folks using yellow, that could be a touch different, but I think we'll be okay.
Do you need to fix your budget, don't you?
Yeah, that's right. We'll budget for more stationery in 2016.
White.
That's right. What I'd like to do is, we have a number of items that have changed since we presented this to you last. Now, we were going to wait till the 24th, but we're ready to give you the second go of it now, and we've got quite a full agenda on the 24th. So, we were glad that we could bring it to you now. We have a couple of principled discussions to have in this, but we're going to, I'd like, if we could, to have those discussions when we talk about the electrical distribution bylaw. So, I'm going to intentionally skip over a couple of things that we'll talk about a little more thoroughly then. Remember, we still have another go at the budget, so we'll take feedback tonight. We've got a couple of questions. We want to show you that, a couple of things we've done. We continue to try to make the budget as transparent as possible and as straightforward as possible, so you can show and see where the money's coming from and going to. So, if anything's ambiguous, please ask. But basically, what I'm going to do is follow the highlighted, which on the white is in green, and I suppose it's some nice shade of grey on the yellow pages on the far right-hand notes. As you know with budgets, if we start with the first 105, 5 for O gas franchise, we now know more of the actuals. We received a letter from Atco on the franchise fee amounts, so we were able to fill that in a little more specifically, which is great. If you drop all the way down, which is our big number here, 124800, we used to have in the disaster grant, 2.2 million from DRP and 600,000 from revitalization, no, resiliency, sorry, resiliency fund. We've moved the resiliency fund to capital, so you'll see that come up later. The reason is, is the DRP money is intended to bring the infrastructure back to what it was. You're actually not improving anything, per se, and the resiliency money is intended to then improve the infrastructure and give you some long-term fixes on infrastructure areas. So, we've split those out. And by all means, jump in anywhere along the way, council.
So, has that money arrived?
We have 500,000 of it, is that right, Hocken?
Just showing 600.
And then the balance will...
Will come, yeah.
Is that coming in the new year?
I don't know that for sure. As a little side note, I was told by a third party today that we were supposed to have a meeting with DRP next week, but DRP hasn't called us to set up the meeting, but they told someone else they were going to. So, we anticipate knowing more next week. We just haven't heard from them yet.
So, are they going to just meet by phone?
No, they're supposed to be coming down to meet with us and talk about the dispersments and all that kind of stuff. And we've already submitted the projects for approvals, so they're supposed to be coming to speak about the approval on each application and all those things.
Is that something that we need to be attentive to?
No, we'll take care of it. Yeah, we'll take care of it, and we'll just, we may still do some projects this year. With the creek as low as it is, we can do a lot of the work now, but we can't do next spring.
Yeah.
And so, as long as we can access the sites, depending on the snow levels, we may try and still do particularly that bridge at the golf course before another event next year. So, that's still totally on the table for us.
Thank you.
Over the page, we're at 151840. This is just for council's information, and I didn't have the sum in here, but what you'll notice is, on FCSS grant, in any of the years, we have all the funding sources, but we don't have the town source in there. But what the towns is, it's the difference of the total expenses minus all the grants accounted, and that's our portion. So, that's why we have here, if you look at all the 2-5-1 everything accounts, and we have a total when we get to that, it's the difference in two for every year. So, our portion's in the $40,000 range, I believe.
No, it's 20.
Well, 25.
Oh, 25, sorry. Okay, 25,000.
It used to be 40.
Right, that's right. I'm thinking of pre-agreement, so, excellent. That's good news. So, that's the only change on that page. On the next page, we have from 172850 down to 194591, actually, 192593. There's a bulk of transmission, distribution, and electrical numbers in there. I'd like to speak to that at the electrical distribution bylaw. What it was is, well, I'll speak to it at the distribution bylaw. Let's put it that way. In 195591, this is an account that's going to change a little bit as we get closer to the end of the year. What it is, it's a front reserves operating account. So, anything that, for example, if I take, let's take the very last one, oiling the taxiway at the airport. It didn't get done this year. We're quite sure because of the weather, it's not going to get done. So, we carry that forward to fund it next year, so we don't tax for it again.
That's that $2,000 in the year?
Yeah, so it's just an example, but they're all that case. They're projects that were taxed for or funded some other way previously, that we bring them into the next year, so we don't double tax. And there was, we've added a couple of small things, like the gym at Civic Center and oiling the taxiway since we last talked. In 211200, so now we're in the expenses. We changed on council expenses in 2017. We just put some money in there for the new election, we'll need to buy tablets for the new council. And we didn't have that in there, we weren't, we had election costs in, but we didn't have those kind of costs in there, so. We've got that in there, thanks to the mayor for catching that. I don't know whether she's looking for a new tablet piece in 2017. We'll wait and see. The next one over the page is 212503, sorry, 212501. We are hopefully, by the end of the year, changing our phone system over from Telus to Shaw. We anticipate probably $6,000 a year in savings by doing that, but we don't know exactly when it's going to get installed, because we've been thinking it's coming for a couple of years now. But they said they're finally ready to come do the build. So, we anticipate some savings, so we reduced 2016, 17, and 18 to reflect. We have $5,000 in there, but we'll see through a calendar year how much it really saved us. But we think it's at least probably $5,000 or $6,000.
Any relationship to you?
No, no, I'd love to have a piece of that file, but I have no claim, nobody, I mean, no one's will associated with Shaw. I'm sure of that. And other than that, we haven't changed anything on that page. If we go to the, over the page, we put page numbers in the bottom corner, by the way, we didn't do that last time, so page five. And this is something we're going to talk about at the planning session, and I actually would prefer, if we don't have a lot of conversation about this tonight, but we took some money out of our native liaison wage to put to commissioners. It's simply, it can go either way. We have discretion to move it how we want it, but we'll have more discussion about that at our planning session, and where we want to prioritize those funds. But for right now, we've moved a little out of there. You'll see that we added to commissioners just at the next line down. We added that line for three years.
Does that mean his hours are going to be cut back a bit?
That would be the implication, yes. Alberta Disaster General 224230, this is just showing the expense of the 2.2 million, and we moved the rehabilitation out, that's why there's a change. The other thing that's a bit of a change throughout the document, you'll see this a couple of times. If you look at 232100 Public Works wages, we were able to get Brandon to go through all the capital projects and pull out the projected wages for all those projects. And what we were doing in the previous budget we brought is, we had the wages in operations and wages in capital. So, we pulled out any of the wages that will go to the capital project from operations. So, Brandon went through each project and estimated the wage amounts, and we were able to pull those out. So, that's what you're seeing in 232100. You may see, was there any in water? Did we pull any wages out of water?
No.
Okay, so you're going to see it all in Public Works, that's where you're seeing that. Sidewalk repairs, there's a couple of things I want to make you aware of. You're going to see two line items under 232200 sidewalk repairs. We've, in 2016, and actually, you're going to see this again under roads, we have an amount in for Moses Lake sidewalk repairs. Under our maintenance agreement with Moses Lake, if we go repair water lines or sewer lines or utilities, and we take up infrastructure, we need to replace it. And we have, we're behind on that. We've got a number of small, just six-foot chunks of sidewalk that need to go back in, and you're going to see in roads, we have a few pieces here and there, road that need repaved. So, this year, we've addressed those specifically in the budget, so that they stay as a priority and they get done. We want to be compliant with that agreement. Blood Tribe Public Works is aware of all of this, and Bart communicates with them. It's not that there's a contentious issue here. Bart just said we need to make sure that those are getting done and itemized specifically.
That'll be for next spring?
Yeah, when we can get in there and start poring, and then we'll work on that. And it's something every few years, you're going to see come back up again. So, we'll leave the line item on the budget, so it doesn't get missed.
So, we do, a question on that?
Yep.
We do the service and maintenance on the infrastructure?
On the mains, yes.
On the mains?
Yeah, any of the distribution system is our responsibility, and we take the utility revenue for that.
Okay. That's what my question was.
Yeah. So, that's how we fund that.
Thank you.
Page six, now this one's a little bit messy, because the header for, the header for the account is on page five, but it's the first line on page six. This is where you'll see, we put 10,000 in, in patching. We added a little to patching, so that we can put 10,000 a year over the next three years into roads on Moses Lake. And that's what that's all about.
So, do we grade their roads?
No, we don't. No, we just, if we have to take up asphalt or sidewalks to fix a utility, we should replace it. But yeah, the general maintenance, anywhere else out there where there's a road with an efficiency, that's for Blood Tribe Public Works. It's only, and they've got a number they need to fix too. We're actually hoping we can do it at the same time. We can do a bunch of that together and partner up, but yeah, only on utility repairs, counselor. We added a small amount in 2016 under our public workshop operating, 232503. We need to fence and do a little better at locking up some of our gravel inventories and milling's inventories. We just got barbed wire fences with the good old-fashioned wire around them, and we're losing inventory. So, we're just going to put up some gates that we can lock and put some apparatus to lock up the roadways there. So, that's what that money's for. Otherwise, down in Airport, we just brought forward that 2,000 for the oiling the taxiway, but we talked about how that was already taxed for, so that doesn't need new funding. We tweaked the amount on, sorry, let me get the number, page seven.
Jeff, can I back up to Airport?
You bet.
Is the county online with the Airport now?
Well, they have a member, so, boy, that's a huge sort of. And what I mean by that is that, yes, they have a member assigned to the committee, but our relationship with that committee is still quite ambiguous, as you know. So, what, aside from having someone assigned to the committee, is all we've asked of the county at this point in time, and they are fulfilling that, yes.
And they're collecting the taxes on the buildings?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, we're paying for the repairs to the runway and so forth?
Correct.
And they collect the taxes?
Correct.
Sounds a little bit one-sided.
So, we'll be having a lot of discussion about the airport coming up, because I finally had that discussion with Parks and Recreation, well, it's not recreation anymore, what's Parks of the province now? Parks and tourism, maybe?
Tourism or something like that.
They own the land, in fact, there's 65 acres there that they own. And we have a, what would they call it? We have a license to occupy the premises. That's how the province looks at us on the airport. So, my first and selfish motivation is, if we're only there by license to occupy, I don't really want to pay for a real property report and easements on property I don't own. So, I'm hoping to have them do that for me next year. But we've had a good talk, she's sending me all the historical documentation on it. I asked her straight up if they would just transfer that land to the municipality, and I said to the, it would only be reasonable to transfer it to the county. And she said they probably would. If there was an application made, they don't seem to have a use for it, so we may be going down that road of saying if the county can just make an application to get the 65 acres back.
I'd also like to take this up with the intermunicipal, that the county looks at taking care of some of the maintenance on that.
Yeah. That was part of the shared services agreement.
Yes.
It was, it was part of the review.
Or the, I shouldn't say the agreement, that's a misnomer, the shared services proposal.
The sheriff did in a hurry.
Yeah. But I think if they own the land and they're collecting the taxes, that maybe puts it in context on the discussion.
Great. Thank you.
But you made good point, counselor. Thank you.
Could I just ask one quick question regarding that annual flying $500? We discussed that a while ago, and I just wondered if we've had any more discussion on that. We pay them to provide breakfast, and then everybody pays to buy breakfast.
Yeah. Counselor, this is another item that needs to be discussed by the committee, once we are able to gather the people together and start to make sense of all, we've been needing to expenses, responsibility, all that has to be drafted properly, is not.
Yeah, I think once we can get the ownership settled and the occupation license and all those things, I think we can move forward with some of those details.
Yeah.
Because that agreement between us and the Airport Club has financial ramifications for both parties, right?
Yeah.
So, everyone may be more willing to do that, depending on how this all plays out. So, hopefully, it's been slow, but it's coming. I've got the person now, anyway.
Bless you.
Bless you. We good on that page then?
Yep.
So, page seven, the only change on this whole page is underwater plant maintenance. The numbers were higher in the last number we brought you, the water plant maintenance, 241504. We've brought them down. As we looked at historical, we've just relaxed the inflationary piece on there, and we think that's perfectly acceptable for those numbers. So, we brought that down a little.
What was the number there for?
Was it 60, Hocken? On 2018, we're up to 60, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was 50, 55, 60, and we just have the inflationary piece on that. Going over, page eight, I don't have, well, I shouldn't say I don't have any changes, there aren't changes, however, in 251804, you can see the total FCSS expenses per year. The net between that and the grants will give you what the town's portion is. We just put that in the middle, so. So, that's the only thing on that page. The only change on page nine is in our tourism marketing, South West Alberta, their half-page rate is 3,400, not 45, so very minor, but it's changed, so we've got that fixed up. We don't have any changes on page 10. Those all are the same as what you saw in the last rendition. And then we have a few changes on page 11, and this starts with pool materials, and this may come sooner. You'll see in pool materials at the top of the page under the chemicals, right now, our chemical costs are quite high, but we still intend to install the gas system, which should have those costs. So, we have it in for 2018. If it can be in place for 17, all the better. But it certainly will just have a positive impact on budget, not a negative one. So, that should be coming soon. Also, in ice center materials, next section, 272302, we removed on Zamboni repairs, we had 4,000 across the board, but then the mayor realized that we have in capital for new Zamboni 2017, so I certainly hope we're not putting $4,000 a year worth of repairs into the brand-new Zamboni. So, we pulled those two years of repairs out. And then on 272412, and this is something I want a little bit of feedback from council on, Civic Center operating, the very last item, we've added that mural for $8,000. But then also next year, we have a $7,000 mural at the card home to fix that one. I'm suggesting that the one on this building be pushed off in order, we may be doing some stucco repairs and a few things on this building, and just for the dollars of it, if we could do one this year and maybe one in 2018, I'd just like to know if council's agreeable that we push one a couple of years? Okay, generally, I see a lot of head nods?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to see something different for this building than a mural.
Okay, so...
And we need to discuss that.
Yeah, so we can have some more of that discussion, but I'll push the Civic Center off a couple of years, and we'll plan on fixing and getting that one replaced in the card home before that wall deteriorates, and we're too far gone.
So, the 8,000 will be for the repair for the card home?
No, the 8,000 is for the Civic Center, in a different...
What did you put it towards the card home?
No, we have that also in here already.
Okay, all right.
So, it's in a different account, but it's coming up here.
So, that $8,000, and it's just going to go back into reserves?
We'll just push the expense two years.
Move forward.
Yeah.
On the, on the card home one, are you intending to do the metal thing?
Yeah.
Just photograph that and then transpose it onto that metal, and that'll give us a longer lifespan?
Correct.
Then it'll be the same?
Same mural.
The same mural?
Yes. That's the plan. But the more it deteriorates, the harder it is to duplicate and get a picture and duplicate it, so we'll see how it comes out of a little freeze and thaw this winter, but I hope it's okay. On page 12, the only change is down in 292100, and this is again where we pulled operational wages out and allocated them to capital where they were to be allocated to capital. So, it reduces the operational wage and it assigns it to the capital project. So, it's, the net doesn't change for us as far as salary, but we just moved that. And that's the only change on page 12. We have a couple of changes on page 13, and this one starts...
While we're on 12, we talked about the new Zamboni coming in, and on 272762, we've got a regular Zamboni reserve. Is the plan to just continue that?
Yeah. The thought was that 10,000 a year, it's got to last 20 years till it's funded again, so if we just continue with the reserve, if we can afford it, you know, it could end up being one of those discretionary ones in a tight year, but if we can afford it, we continue with the reserve. So, then 15 or 20 years after that, there's some money in the bank. Page 13, this one is, this is the page that things get a little sticky, but please go, bear with me here, and I'll think we can get through all this okay. Some of it's fine, some of it's very simple. In the transfers to reserves, 294300 account, we, you remember last time, we had very specific reserves, like admin vehicle reserve for a very small amount, and we've generalized some of the reserve accounts, so we have a fleet replacement reserve. So, instead of it being tandem truck reserve and admin vehicle reserve, they're just lumped together in a fleet replacement reserve. So, that was the one that we really lumped together and brought in. Together, we restated, equipment reserves was a combination of some, so that's what we did in that reserve account. The big one to talk about here, and this actually opens up a bunch of discussions, I'm not sure now the order I want to take this on, but let me take a stab at it. If you look at 294762, you will see the major utility capital reserves, and you'll see those three numbers, 116, 42, 113. I want to talk for just a minute about, because I want you as a council to be incredibly clear about what we have done in this budget and how it has affected the capitalization policy and your reserves going forward, because they are big policy pieces we're proposing to change here. So, I want this to be clear. You have a sheet in front of you that Hocken did up called Capitalization Policy, and at the risk of, I hope you all have it, but at the risk of being redundant, I'm going to read a bunch of this verbatim, just so you understand kind of what we're doing here. The town's capitalization policy was approved in '04 when the province of Alberta changed the cost sharing formula for police services. The purpose of the policy was to ensure that the $419,000 and change in savings from the change in provincial police funding would not be absorbed in the day-to-day operations of the town, but instead, it would be reinvested into the capital requirements of the town. So, some of you may be familiar with this history. Counselor Baner, you were probably around or on the council at the time when this happened, but we used to pay that much for policing. And the council at the time said, if we just stop taxing for that money, then it's just, you know, it'll disappear, and this way, we can continue to tax for it, the citizens are comfortable with the rate we have now, we'll use it to fund capital. So, that's when the capitalization policy was formed. You will note in this budget that the capitalization policy is unfunded going forward, but let me explain. The money set aside through the policy has largely been reinvested into capital assets. Only a small fraction of it has ever been reserved. By December 31, 2014, we had reserved approximately 195,000 through the policy. So, over 11 years, we were only reserving about $17,000 a year on the average. So, we were taxing $419,000 and only reserving $17,000. We were using it all to fund capital, okay? And then, well, this gets into it here, is what you, what we have done here, and what you have kind of, we feel you wanted us to do, is to not have this circular taxing and spending, where we take tax dollars, use it to fund utility capital, and then take utility revenue to fund shortfalls in the operational budget. So, that's what's been happening. We just had dollars crossing sides of the budget here. So, now, we've set it up where our utility revenue is funding capital. And so, we're not taxing for that and putting it over there. So, and I know I'm quoting Hocken, and he's sitting right here, but I likely wrote, so I'm just going to go with it. What we need to realize is, while we were taxing through capitalization policy to fund capital, utility surpluses were being used to subsidize the town's day-to-day operations, while the capitalization and MSI were being used to finance utility capital investment. This is a circular strategy that turns money through our reserve accounts unnecessarily. It is a misalignment of funding. It makes more sense for the utility money to fund utility capital and tax money to fund operations. In our proposed twenty sixteen, eighteen budget, we're not deleting the capitalization policy to make our reserves look better, we're realigning the funding. Our rate of capital investment is still keeping at the same pace, but we're funding utility capital with utility money instead of funding with capitalization policy and MSI funds. So we need to realize that despite this proposed change in policy, we're at the same time moving in the right direction with our net reserve amounts. And this is coming at the end of this document, we'll talk about again. The net uses or the net or the uses of additions to reserves from twenty fifteen to eighteen are as follows. So we're using four hundred and sixty-nine thousand of reserves and two twenty-two, then thirty-five, then we're putting back one fifty-one. This is despite the fact that we are budgeting to use pool reserves of two hundred and three in twenty sixteen and one oh five in twenty seventeen. We feel that this realigns the funding. So we had this circular funding, we had this false notion that we were, we had all this capital money, but we were just taxing for it. And then taking any utility surplus, literally to maybe use that same money to fund the capitalization policy to fund capital. I mean, it really was circular. And it wasn't adding to our reserves. Reserves have continued to deplete, and we've got a couple of years before we really bottom, because we have won some huge capital expenditures. And then we start to grow reserves. And that's through utility funding though, not through operational funding.
Councilor Banger would like to ask a question.
Do we have the right to depreciate, amortize our depreciation on our buildings and so forth?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then, then how do we do it with it all lumped together?
You do, you'll approve two budgets. You'll approve one with depreciation, one without, because the fact remains you could not tax enough to cover all your depreciation. We have forty-two million dollars in assets.
Okay.
The depreciation would be staggering to try and recover it all. So that's when, when Hocken and I came about utility rates and asked you what your number was that you wanted to try and get to for reserving, that's really in large degree where we were going with that too. We can't tax for depreciation.
Well, the annual depreciation of our capital assets is approximately two million dollars a year. And you'll see that our capital budget is approximately two million dollars a year.
Okay.
So we're keeping pace with the depreciation by adding about that much.
In assets?
In assets, in new assets, yeah.
This makes sense then.
Yeah. I really think what this policy would do is that utility would fund utilities and reserve that are located for something would fund that particular item rather than crisscrossing through general funding.
I just think it gave us a bit of a, and maybe this is the wrong wording, and Hocken, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fact that we always had this four hundred thousand dollars in capitalization policy gave us kind of this false sense of funding availability and savings that wasn't there. If you look historically, we only increased reserves by seventeen thousand dollars a year. That's it. And now council said we wanna try and find ourselves at about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, this budget's gonna show you, as indicated by major utility capital reserves, that we're not at a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And I know we wanna get there, but you need to understand we're coming from an average of seventeen thousand dollars a year to try and get to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year while doing, while investing enough in capital to pace depreciation. So that's the other piece of this. We could simply not do any capital, we can build reserves tomorrow. That's easy. But that's not how it works. We could take all the utility surpluses in electrical, water, garbage, we can reserve, but now we can't fund capital. So we're trying to pace depreciation and reach a reserve amount that council feels is reasonable. And the fact of the matter is there's going to be a bit of a growing pain here for a couple of years. But already, we're looking at a hundred and seventeen. I know twenty seventeen's a little shy at forty-three, but then back up to a hundred and thirteen. And we can manipulate that as the year gets closer, because it's largely dependent on investment in capital. Right, that, that plays a big part in that. So that is, and I appreciate Hocken typed all that up, we've been racking our brains on this one for a bit to make sure we're making what we feel is the right decision on reserves. Because it's a drastic departure if we get rid of the capitalization policy. You will not tax for almost four hundred thousand dollars worth of capital funding. But your utility rates are going to provide that amount now. So that's what's gonna happen. And we're not gonna take utility surplus to fund operations, we're gonna keep them on their respective sides of the budget. So we will probably have a lot more discussion about this.
I think you'd have quite a good discussion with general public too, not understanding what's happening.
Yeah, it's a little bit complex, but at the end of the day, the public wanna know two things. What happens to my utility rates, what happens to my tax rate?
Right.
Those are the two questions. So right now, this budget is based on a one percent increase in revenue. That's the other wild card in this whole discussion. We don't know what assessment's gonna do when it comes to taxation next year. If assessment is an example, is up three percent, let's say, between new builds and between market forces. So let's say it's up three percent, that's two percent that can flow right through to reserves. Because we didn't, we haven't budgeted for it here. But if, without raising the mill rate, if assessment increases by a percentage greater than what we've predicted, that can flow right to reserves. Because all of the operational expenses are set now. Or you have the choice to reduce mill rate, which councils in the past have done based on assessment increases. So those are the discussions we'll have next May. But know that the implication is that can flow right through.
And on the other side of the coin, if assessment goes down.
That's right. Then you have a mill rate discussion to have, but remember, if, if assessment goes down generally, because all of our homes depreciated by five percent and you raise mill rate, my tax implication stays the same.
Yes.
I don't pay any more taxes, just the mill rate tweaked. So that's the other huge piece of this, that's a huge policy and political piece for you as council, that we're trying to build this budget and your reserve request on everything we know on November tenth. But we don't know requisitions and we don't know assessment, and so we don't know a couple of things. But we think a one percent revenue increase simply based on new construction is reasonable. And there's no tax impact on Joe and Jane's citizen with that. That's the intention, okay? So I just wanted to, I didn't wanna belabor that point, but I just wanted to be very clear what we're doing here, because you have very few policies with four hundred thousand dollars in consequence. And we are going against your policy with this budget. Obviously, we would intend to bring it to council and tweak it accordingly, but right now, as we speak, it is contrary to the capitalization policy, okay?
It's contrary in one way, but because it never was followed properly, is really trying to reestablish the proper playing field here. We never used that policy properly, it never was applied properly against the budget.
It's showing more transparency.
Yeah, it gave us a false sense of capital funding.
Right.
Right, is what it did.
It just was exactly what you said, separating the fund, but.
And we couldn't tax, we really couldn't tax enough just to put the four hundred and nineteen on the citizens, so we took utility surpluses to fund it.
Right.
You know, we were, we were just moving this around. So we think this just straightens it out.
Yeah.
And when we look at our trends on reserves, we think it sends our trends in the right direction. And it starts to smarten up what was been a decline and a lot of spending in reserves. Now, I don't wanna give spending in reserves a bad connotation totally, because we're doing some big projects that we've been reserving for a long time. That's the point. Literally, the purpose is you save and save and save, and then when a project comes to spend, so that's fine, that's all good. But we weren't putting back in what we need to keep those sustainable. And so that's, that's the story on capitalization and major utility capital reserves.
Yeah, Sammy's a good question.
I think I'm backing up a little bit about, or have we talked about the Zamboni yet?
Yep.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, I wanted to back up to that. But what's the, what's that cost gonna be to buy that new Zamboni?
It's right there.
Twenty-ninety, I believe, council?
Which page are we on?
Let me tell you. Oh, yeah, the capital expense actually won't come until page sixteen, so I guess for capital expenditures, you're right.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, I was looking for.
Ice Center Capital, page sixteen, two, seven, two, three, oh, seven.
I'm gonna wait for that question till we get to there then.
Sure, yeah, sure. A few, the next one was just a little tweak in the changes to capital budgets. So the amount of MSI capital for capital changed as we just moved a few things back and forth. Moving to page fourteen, I just looked at my watch, this isn't going nearly as quickly as I thought it would, but anyway, we're doing good. This is, this is the bulk of the meeting. You'll see on page fourteen, it's our enhancement grant for the creek, just went to capital, we've talked about that twice. We just did some rounding on the firm reserves number, just no big deal. Down in uses of capital funds, you'll see on two, twenty-four, seven, six, two, we just, again, rehabilitation. We took the two point two million and put that in operation, so there was a change. The one change on the greater, two, three, two, seven, six, two, the bottom of page fourteen, it's, so, and you will all appreciate this. We had a trade-in amount that the supplier quoted, but we also had a sales estimate that was much higher. We budgeted the trade-in amount. We weren't banking on the auction sale on this one. Okay, so we're budgeting the bird in hand, and then if we can sell it for more, awesome. But we're budgeting the lesser amount, which was the trade-in amount. So that was changed, and we had some more firm quotes since last budget time came around.
It hasn't gone to auction yet, though, has it?
Oh, no, 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 we won't do that. Yeah, no, it won't, it won't be going to auction now.
Okay.
Yeah, we got stung, and we're just not going down that road again. We'll list it for sale, and if we can exceed the trade-in value, great, but we're certainly not gonna roll the dice on the, on the asset value, so. Just down on this, the skid steer, we just had, we've had more firm quotes, we've had the guys getting paper quotes for those, so we know the numbers. Very small changes there. The only change on page fifteen was a sanitary sewer capital, two, four, two, seven, six, two, so page fifteen. Two-thirds of the way down, it's twinning a sewer line under the creek by Extra Foods. This is something that Bart would like to see us get, I mean, it's in twenty eighteen, but he'd like to see us get on the budget. Everything from this side of town flows down by Extra Foods, goes under the creek, and goes to the lift station, which then, which then pumps it to the treatment plant. That line is, it's getting full of gravel and rocks and all kinds of other stuff, and it's starting to lose capacity over all the years. So he'd like to twin that line, put a manhole in before the line, push another line under the creek, right to the lift station, so that's twinned, and give more capacity in that line. It's not one we're able to, we can never get in there and maintain it, because there's no end to the, we can't stop the flow. Once we can isolate the flow, we can go in and maintain it. But with one line and feeding all the sewer use from the west side of town, you can never stop and maintain it.
So once you get that in, then you can cut off the other one and it won't.
Yeah, then we can maintain them on alternate times, and we can just leave them both open to take half the capacity instead of the full capacity, but it allows us to isolate, right? So that's the reason there. That's just not a line we can let deteriorate. It's not an option. It has to be in a working order.
Well, it's a problem line every time we have a flood.
Well, it hits, that whole pump station has capacity issues when we have a flood. That's just a problem generally. And we take small and mitigated things every year to try and fix that. We seal up manholes, we look at drainage, but it's so much larger problem.
One question on all of our equipment, Public Works, everything, we have blanket insurance? Or do we individualize insure all of our equipment?
Yes, well, yes and yes. So we have one large policy, but every single piece is itemized under that policy.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, anytime we inherit a piece of equipment, we have to send serial numbers in with values and everything, for sure.
Good.
Yeah. Page sixteen, we're nearing, nearing the end of this council, just a rounding, we're talking the six hundred and twenty-six, sixteen-dollar rounding on one of the projects. We had, the Zamboni was just changed to update the more recent quote in the pricing. Now, that's still a year out, so that's probably gonna change a little bit again, but that's our most recent pricing on it, so council, Barnes?
Okay, the question was, is that Zamboni really getting ancient?
We've, we ran on half the cylinders in the engine last season, and then we rebuilt the engine after the, we, we crossed our fingers, and it barely had enough power to do its job, because half the engine didn't, half the cylinders didn't fire. So we rebuilt the engine this spring, and so it seems to be running okay right now. But yeah, it's starting to show its, its signs of wear and age.
We used to clean the ice.
How, how long we had that?
You know what, I don't remember what that is, I wanna say it's a ninety.
Yeah, they give us free screen, I don't know.
I, I, I don't told you this, I wanna say it's a ninety-four or a ninety-five.
So it's twenty years.
Yeah, I think it's somewhere in there.
So we've gotten good use out of that thing, yeah?
Yeah, it's been good. But the problem with it is, like, when half those cylinders went down, we'd never have a day that we can send it to the shop for a week to get the engine rebuilt. You flood the ice fifteen, twenty times a day, you know, twelve times a day, probably? So it was pretty tricky to say, we're just gonna take it out of commission and send it over to Ford to rebuild the engine. You just can't when the rink's open. So thankfully, it made it, we were lucky. But yes, I would say it's time. We've got a lot of life out of this thing.
Is there a tension to sell it or keep it all as a?
Yeah, I don't know, I guess we could entertain, see if there's some value there. I just don't know that industry well enough to know what the market is for, for used equipment. I mean, it's expensive equipment, for sure. And depending on how confident we feel in that engine rebuild, it may have a few years' life for somebody down the road. Maybe they have a little out of the rink, or they got some, I'm not sure. So we don't have a place to store it, if we keep it as a backup, that's the one problem. We wouldn't have any place to keep it out of the elements. So that's the story on that.
Tell me, tell me about this Redford irrigation.
Yeah, yeah.
Upgrade from hydraulic to.
At Town Square and at Redford, we have from way back in the day hydraulic irrigation lines. So they're always under pressure, and then what happens is when the zone comes on, removes the pressure and it sprays. You cannot get parts or service hydraulic irrigation lines anymore.
That's what happened.
That's why we had to dig up everything over there and try and go to an electric system and a pressure system. And so we, Randy wants to do the same thing at Redford before, well, we have some small issues there, but you can't buy parts from him anymore. Places like, why did I forget the name of the place that, Oak Creek, sorry, Oak Creek, that they don't carry the parts from anymore. They've taken that out of service. So it's an antiquated system that, it's starting to fail on us as well. And so we're gonna have someone like a Tom Smith or somebody change it over to an electric system.
Jeff, talking about the irrigation line, I saw somewhere, I can't remember which page, that the temple might be interested in having the irrigation.
So we, we proposed it to them, but we don't have any indication whether they're gonna partner.
All right, that's why you put two thousand and eighty.
Yeah, so it's out of ways, and it's been proposed with costs.
All right, thanks.
So that's all the changes. Since we last met with the council, the only other changes, and I recognize it's in much smaller print. You have another document here, which is eight and a half by fourteen, which is the five-year capital budget. Last time, we only brought you three years. And so this time around is the last two years of twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Now, to be fair, is some of this gonna change by twenty twenty? You bet it is. But what we tried to do is have relatively consistent expenditures based on priorities. So we weren't just plucking projects out of the air. We were looking at continuation of utility infrastructure, we were looking at vehicles or fleet that might need replace. So if you look at twenty nineteen, which would be your fourth page in that document, you've seen through eighteen. Twenty nineteen has one point nine eight two million dollars worth of capital improvements. And you can see what those are there, I don't know if there's any questions. And again, priorities are gonna come up, and something's gonna break, and things are gonna have to change. But when we're looking at funding long-term, we like to have some indication of our total capital spending. So that's why we have, and twenty twenty has one point six four two million dollars of capital spending. And that'll start, some of the main things you'll notice for there, once Second Avenue is done, up to Ninth, then we have a couple of one-offs, one block here and there. But then we're gonna start Sixth Street from the highway over. That's the next kind of oldest piece of infrastructure after Second Avenue. So that's why that's on there. So there's those other two years of capital. And on December ninth, we'll bring you back, we'll do this one more time, when we have, that council.
What's happening with our, with our Main Street utilities?
So Main Street's an interesting one.
Yeah.
It's okay, we've patched over the years since I've been with the town, we've probably done two digs on Main Street to fix a crack or a leak here or there. That's gonna be a nightmare, to be frank, it's gonna be a logistic nightmare to change the water and sewer under Main Street. What we've, what Bart's kind of envisioning in his mind is potentially, but again, the connection piece of logistics of this is can we run them in the alleyways? Can we run water and sewer and water and sewer in the laneways behind the businesses? Because just the amount of time that will shut down, and, and if you don't shut it down, then you do so little of the time. You work at night, and you have to have everything refilled and graded and packed for the next morning, and then you come in at night again. You know, you'll get so, you have two lengths of pipe a day, you know, your costs will be crazy. So there's two big factors. One is when, when the Department of Highways wants to repave Main Street, we wanna be in on that, so we're not repaying it, we're not paying to pave it. So definitely, we wanna keep in touch there. And when they say, well, twenty twenty-one, we're gonna repay it, well, we have to be pretty serious about the infrastructure in twenty nineteen and twenty, for sure.
We got room to run it in the alleys with our underground wiring?
Well, we got incredible amounts of elevation issues in those back lanes. That's a huge problem. You look at those businesses on Main Street and go to the back lane and you're eight feet up.
Yeah, the west, well, especially on the west side.
Yeah, yeah, the west side, you're way up. So to try and get a sewer line to a depth that can still service that building and.
What does that mean?
It'll be incredible. But I mean, Main Street has sewer lines that run underneath businesses, right down the middle of the business.
So how do you, I remember the last time that Main Street was tore up. I remember the last time that Main Street was tore up.
Now, there are, see, fast forward to the technologies of today, we've got items such as pipe bursting or pushing, where maybe you have to close the intersection and have a great big hole in this intersection and a great big hole in that intersection and you push a line all the way through. It's expensive, but it's probably not as expensive as trying to open trench Main Street.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, by the time the logistics of doing it.
How big a line would that be?
I, I, I don't know, council.
Are you talking the water feed?
Oh, no, I'm talking sewer lines.
Push those big?
Yeah, they fuse it all together, it's one piece with no seams and, but you still have to dig in at every surface too. Still gotta dig down everywhere someone joins in.
I think Bill and I can remember when Main Street was tore up before. With the trench down.
Been a while.
So it's on the radar, it's on the infrastructure master plan radar? We're just scared to death of it, to be honest.
Well, but you have to move forward.
Oh, yeah, we have to do it, and if the province decides they're gonna repay it, then we definitely have to look at the infrastructure before they do that, because that's a huge cost. That's gotta be, you know, two million bucks to repay Main Street from one end to the other. And better the province pays it. So definitely, that's gonna be the trigger, that's gonna be the catalyst, I think, on this. Right now, we're not aware of any major issues. We fixed the line that went under Zenus and under Holland, so we lined that, we epoxy lined that sewer line. And so it's in good shape, we can camera that, we can see that it's in good repair. But the catalyst will be the paving of Main Street, for sure.
All right, so more questions?
Um, I was gonna say, on, on the east side of the street, aren't most of the sewer lines already in the laneway? I know mine is.
Is it?
My business. Yeah.
I don't know.
There's a manhole out there and I know my sewer line goes out there because it froze up and I had to have Duck Baker come in and photo group back up from the laneway up to my own.
On the three hundred block, most of them are, because we did a bunch of repairs on those this year. We went in and fixed up between Ready Mart and Commons and a few businesses there.
But I don't mind this.
So they're out the back on the east side, so that may be a great thing. Um, it's that darn west side, the elevation to this is gonna be incredible.
Oh, that's gotta be a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah. So that's your second go at the budget, council.
Well, to, Hawk and to yourself, Jeff, thank you so much. I truly appreciate once again the effort to create transparency, to allow us to understand that budget carefully and to have been pointed where there's maybe still some points that we need to review one more time.
If I might, Hawk, and was there anything that we missed big time there that we talked about?
No.
Okay, Hawk and I have talked circles around some of this stuff for days, so I'm worried that I missed something.
I'm just wondering, while you're there, do you maybe want to go to seven D and to follow with the budget, talk about the, uh, electrical distribution bylaw? Would you like to do that now?
Sure.
Thanks.
So the electrical distribution bylaw, you have a copy of the proposed amendments in your package. One of them would have been fairly interesting, but the numbers wouldn't have made a lot of sense. The other one would have been incredibly boring and sixty-eight pages, so I apologize for both of those, yeah. Um, but I'll, I'll speak to both separately. Normally, we only amend Schedule A, which is the rates. But Kevin Phillips was looking at a number of things and looking at, um, NMAX's uh, terms and conditions and other places and felt there was a few things within our terms and conditions that could be updated. So he sent me an amendment to the terms and conditions. That's the second schedule, I believe it's B, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's Schedule B. And that's terms and conditions. So that one, as I went through it, really the, the changes were that it, it added a number of definitions for clarity. It didn't change the intent of the amendment really at all. It added a few pieces around renewable energies and how we'll deal with those and, and things like that, which, just to modernize that a bit. By and large, I would recommend that council, uh, pass first reading when we get to that on that skid. I would also recommend it on Schedule A, but Schedule A, the, the fees and charges needs a little bit more explanation. In the bylaw, the fees and charges are set up on a per-day charge basis, which, to be frank, doesn't tell you arrive very much at all. It, it's really not that useful in understanding what's happening with the rate. So what I have for you, council, is you all have in your package a sheet that's got three columns with the impact on residential, small commercial, and medium commercial. And you have another sheet behind that that factors in some usage charge, so I'll get to that as well. The bylaw is written in daily use for residential of kilowatt-hours and daily use of kilovolts for a commercial. And there's a whole bunch of reasons behind that that Hawk and I have tried hard to understand, and we think we're about there. But at the end of the day, the question is, what's the impact? Um, what's the impact on the user? And so this is actually gonna take us into, uh, some other discussion on transmission riders and a few things that we'll touch on. So does everybody have these two pages up that they can find? There's the, okay. So I wanna start with CRD one hundred, residential user. Before I do that, let me preface, some of you will remember that council was faced with the motion last year of what to do with a large surplus in transmission rider revenue. And you chose to credit it back. That it came through, transmission is intended to be a flow-through. We collect it on behalf of the transmission company, we flow it through to pay the bill. But it's highly volatile. That number changes all the time based on the market. So we pick a date and time and we pick a safe number for the year. Sometimes we're close, sometimes we're not. So you had a large credit and it was, I would suggest rightly so, that you should credit it back to the users. So what you see in twenty fifteen is a large credit on the transmission rider. The rider was a credit rider. So the reason I added twenty fourteen is when we look at twenty sixteen's rates, I didn't wanna look them just in comparison with twenty fifteen, because there was this anomaly of a large rider. So it's pretty hard to keep that up, right? It's not necessarily the fair way to apply it. So what you'll see on residential in twenty fourteen, you will see that the transmission service and system charges are going to stay flat. The revenue is anticipated to stay, the, the demand for us is anticipated to stay flat. So the rate has not changed on the transmission portion under this bylaw. You will see the rider has changed. So in twenty fourteen, we issued a, a rider to gain more money because we were low the year before. In twenty fifteen, we were high, so we credited some back. And in twenty sixteen, this is actually what's left of your credit. It wasn't all applied in one year, it was spread out over two. So there's ninety-nine thousand dollars being credited back in twenty sixteen, so the rider's much smaller. Where you will see the increase, and this is, um, in fact, Hawk, did we give them all one of these?
Yeah.
I apologize that I'm throwing a bunch of papers at you. All of you should have a paper like this that says Town of Cards and Electrical Department. I need to pull this into play on this part. This is the projections from Kevin on our costs. What I want you to look at is under expenses, on the bottom half of that sheet, you have Fortis Distribution. So this is the charge that we get from Fortis, that they get approved from the AUC, I guess it would be, to pass on to us for distribution. Apparently, Fortis had a number of years where they weren't fully getting refunded for all of their improvements and the AUC has allowed them to get it all back this year. So what you're seeing is a change of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in twenty fifteen to two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in distribution for twenty sixteen. I would love to tell you you can do something about it, but the fact is, you can't. Unless you wanna subsidize that rate somehow out of taxes, which I would strongly suggest against.
Or start generating all our electricity.
Well, so, those are those bigger picture issues that we'll definitely be having more discussion about. But what, how you see that affecting the rate is under distribution now, back on that first page, under CRD one hundred residential. The service charge in twenty fifteen will go from seventeen thirty-eight to nineteen eleven. And the system usage charge, which is directly tied to that as well, will go from sixteen fifty-two to eighteen eighteen. And so what that means is, if you go down to the total after the local access fees and everything, the charge per month, um, for distribution and transmission per residential user will be fifty-three seventy a month. So this is sixteen percent, almost seventeen percent higher than last year, because everyone has six-dollar credit right. But if you look at twenty fourteen, it's two point two percent less than twenty fourteen, because there's still a small credit rider. So if you took that small credit rider out, you'd be pretty close to the same as twenty fourteen. You'd be pushing about the same rate as twenty fourteen. So what that says to me though, under this bylaw with this rate, you're not going to see, with twenty fifteen as an anomaly, people will see rates similar to what they paid in twenty fourteen. It's gonna take them back to that. If you look at small commercial and medium commercial, the story is relatively the same, except the difference is a little bit bigger on those. And I'll skip over the explanation of all of them, because it's the same rates applied to different users. For a small commercial, they will see about a fourteen percent increase over twenty fifteen, because they were getting a fifty-six dollar credit. But they will see about a twelve point four percent decrease from twenty fourteen. So taking that anomaly out, they see a reduction. And again, if you probably pulled out that credit, you'd see them paying almost the same as twenty fourteen. I think it would almost bring their rate, they'd still be a little under, actually. Well, I'm saying twenty sixteen, they'd probably be very similar, but right now they're under by twelve percent. And large, or medium commercial's the same story, they're actually seventeen percent less than twenty fourteen. And that's simply based on the credit rider. So I think that the impact on the user is fairly minimum. Um, in fact, we see it across the board, even though those things went up. There's still enough credit rider that the impact is, they're still paying less than twenty fourteen. They're paying more than last year. But you will probably remember, I remember this discussion, that everyone said, well, everyone's gonna be upset that it went up from the previous year. No one's gonna recognize that twenty fifteen was an anomaly. And I agree. That's probably what's going to happen. But it's how we, you know, that's, if everyone understands how the rate was derived, we understand.
The price of being transferred.
Right.
Jeff, just wondering, when the change is made in two thousand sixteen, would it be possible, when we do the NMAX billing, to have a little blurb to help them understand?
Nope. It's certainly possible, I'm not sure how to explain it in a hundred, you know, fifty words or forty words, that's my concern.
Just simply that two thousand fifteen, uh, saw a refund due to whatever.
Which the refund has largely been distributed now.
And that, at this point, uh, this was an anomaly, we back to normal rates.
So we can, we can look at that. What you'll see in that next sheet in your package is, we just did, Kevin did this up about factoring in usage. So if we took the average homeowner that used six hundred kilowatts a month, they're gonna see a one point two percent decrease from twenty fourteen. If we took an average small commercial that used seventy-five hundred kilowatts, they would see a four point eight percent decrease from twenty fourteen. And a medium commercial would see a five point eight percent decrease from twenty fourteen. So that just factors in some of the usage. This other one was simply just the transmission and distribution, and then this factors in usage. So that's the rationale behind Schedule A for the bylaw, okay? One of these days, and I don't think it's gonna be today, Hawk and I are going to have a long conversation with you about transmission riders. Because we're not content with the transmission rider. It's super volatile and it's difficult to manage. We've gone, well, let me give you, we'll talk about it now for a minute. Let's talk about it for a minute. Here's the problem with transition, uh, transmission riders, well, lots of problems, eh? If you take this sheet again, that shows the revenue and expenses of the electrical department, I wanna illustrate what this means. If you take twenty fourteen and look at the first line, and actually, we, we highlighted them the same color. So the green transmission base, the revenue that we project to take in is six hundred and fifty-five thousand, this was twenty fourteen. So we took in six hundred and fifty-five thousand. The bill we got from Fortis was five hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we took in a hundred thousand dollars more than Fortis billed us for transmission. And theoretically, it should be a flow-through, okay? But we don't know what the bill's gonna be until the year's over. And so there's a margin put in that revenue to try and mitigate fluctuations in the system. If I were to take this table and go back to two thousand four, eight of those ten years, I believe, we lost money. We budgeted X revenue and it came in higher. So then we had to keep putting on additional riders the next year. We put on, what, charge riders the next year to try and get our money back every year. And so then we projected higher revenues and then it went way down and we were left with this big pot of money that we've credited back now over the last couple of years. So it's really volatile and what it does is it, it frustrates the end user. Right, so their bill's all over the map and Hawk and I have looked into this a bit. In theory, you could change this bylaw quarterly to try and keep up with the transmission rider. So the transmission rider is changed quarterly. There's an application by the transmission utility and they grant them changes every quarter. It's certainly possible. I'm not sure it's practical. And we're kinda struggling with how to deal with that. In theory, what, what Hawk and I have been kicking around is, if we have a year of profitability in that, instead of giving it back as a rider, we reserve it. And we build up a pot of money that's called a transmission rider reserve. And in the years that we lose, if we gamble and lost, we have money in the reserve account to fund it and the end user's rate stays constant. We don't put on credit risers, then debit riders, then credit riders. And we don't keep doing that.
And I think for, for a consumer perspective, one who receives a bill, it's much easier to understand that things are significantly the same. Instead of seeing one time down, one time up, you never know where you're going. And how do you explain that to a consumer?
The problem with it is, is we are not agreed, it's not that we're in disagreement, but we have not come to consensus, that's the better term, on how to administer that type of accountability. It's got a number of problems with it. For one, we never know the actual until it's done. It's always a responsive movement. I can't tell you that we'll have a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollar profit in transmission this year. That's what I've legitited.
But Jeff, isn't this part of the job that we hire Kevin Phillips for?
And he estimates to the best of his ability. But the problem is that, in our case, Altolink or Fortis in Alberta can go to the AUC every quarter and apply for a change. And so he tries to read the play, he tries to read their infrastructure needs, he looks at what they're planning for capital, and he tries to understand what that's gonna look like. But, but it is a wacky science to, to be, to be complimentary to it. Because we'll see these wild swings. In fact, the number that Kevin had proposed for us to charge for twenty six, for twenty sixteen was way higher than this. And I just said, I'm not comfortable with that margin necessarily, and we've tried to work it down.
I, I just want to ask you, Jeff, so in terms who do not own their electrical, how is that factored in?
The rider changes every quarter.
Okay.
They have a rider that's just up or down every quarter.
Yeah, but this is why, I was wondering, is Fortis that does it? So it does go through the whole process?
Yeah, it just changes every quarter. Like I said, we have the ability to change our bylaw every quarter, but there's one other weird complexity here, is where it was one month removed from the change. So Altolink gets it, they pass it to Fortis, Fortis adjusts their rates, the next month, Fortis bills Cardston for the increase they got the month before. We're always delayed in trying to gauge and guess what that, that rate rider's going to be. So that's why Kevin tries to give us a margin and says, you know what, we'll try and get you on the good side of it, we'll try and get you to over-collect, so you're not trying to come up with money, which we did for a number of years, which was quite surprising to me when I looked at the history. So he's trying to get us a number that we don't have to try and charge a rider the next year, but we're really charging it all year long and then potentially looking how to credit it back.
Right.
I mean, this year, we're crediting back ninety-nine thousand dollars and still projecting a huge surplus in transmission rate revenue. But we're just trying to mitigate the volatility.
Are we wise in crediting that back? Like you said, can you set up a, a program?
That's what we've been discussing, I don't know, Hawk, did you wanna throw in something on that one?
Well, I don't know if I should say anything, but.
Don't muddy the waters for me.
Help us understand the administration of an account of that sort.
It's a deferral account and...
Exactly, right.
The reason it's called the deferral account is because there's this lag.
Right.
And if you're going to change the strategy and instead of deferring the treatment of it, you absorb it in year, then you have to, the way that it's budgeted now, we're budgeting a, a surplus, we're making money off the transmission, if you'd say that. If you wanted to change your strategy, we would have to reserve, you know, in two thousand sixteen, in our budget, there's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar margin in our transmission. So if we were gonna reserve that uh, in order to build up a fund that would allow us to be the shock absorber and not the rate payer, where are we, how are we going to take a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars out of our budget? out of our budget in 2016? We don't have it.
Exactly right.
And so, yeah, I don't know, it's kind of a.
We always think we figured it out. And then as we continue to debate it, we come up with, you know what, there's some financial implications for year one.
Exactly right.
There always is. And so then we kind of go back to the drawing board and.
We could, instead of crediting back the 90,000 in 2016, we could reserve it and it wouldn't affect our budget at all. And we could, we could reserve an additional amount. And then another additional amount, provided the trend in transmission charges stays the same, we could build that fund up over two or three years until, say, it hits a couple hundred thousand, at which point we might be comfortable.
But that makes a question, since we've had a motion to return that amount of money to the consumer, you have to do something with that legal aspect too.
Yeah, a motion is fixed by a motion.
You can nix it. And so that's something. So essentially, that is the, the point that we need to discuss is, do we do, as Council Banbury suggests, that we do not refund that amount, but start to use it to create that reserve?
Right.
That is one point. How transparent is that? That's the other question. If we feel comfortable that the purpose is to eventually create that reserve and to take away the roller coaster, maybe it's a good thing to do.
I would suggest that the transparency is still there if you're using the funds for the same purpose.
Right. So long we understand that the purpose is to be reserved and not to be used in any other ways.
Right.
And you're comfortable with that in 2016?
No. If I was comfortable with it, I'd probably try to put it in there, but.
Wait, the point is, we need a way lot more. $100,000 is hardly enough.
So just so that I understand what's happening here, because, I mean, the budget is a year-long process. We're collecting these funds over the year.
Correct.
Why, and then we pay a one-time shot out, or is it paid out?
Monthly, don't we?
Monthly, yeah.
Monthly.
Right. So why in the budget can we not say this is what we're estimating is going to be the over and above at the end of the year and then you make that adjustment at the end of the year?
Yeah, and we certainly can, as long as we reserve every bit that we're estimating so it doesn't go back to be spent somewhere else.
Right, exactly.
You know, the danger is, if you think you're going to make $200,000 on it, but you don't, you don't reserve it, well, now it's a revenue piece in your budget.
Right.
And you're funding other stuff.
Right.
Which is dangerous. The other thing is that, and again, because of that deferral piece, we can project $128,000. It could come out at nothing.
Yep.
And there's, we learned last Friday how this happens and ISO buys electricity on the market, and so if you have a hot summer, then you can expect it to go higher. There's a whole bunch of factors at play here. But yes, you're right, we can project it as long as we reserve it all. And then we'd have to adjust the reserve at the end of the year to reflect the actual, which we're not going to know until in February of the next year, right? We're not going to know.
So my bias here would be is that's what I would like to see done. And that's why we have great administration accounts to figure out how to do that.
The other spin on that, the other spin on that we looked at is that we always budgeted the revenue to match the expense. And if it came out over at the end of the year, we took that amount, put it away, but we never budgeted revenue. Now that works as long as you're always in a profitable situation. But what happens if you didn't budget revenue and your expenses went higher? Now you're in trouble.
Collect more next year.
Now it is short in your budget.
You're short unless you have a kitty to start from that you could make a motion to fund it out of, right? Which in this case could be the 99,000.
Right, that could be the seed money for that reserve.
Just to illustrate, in our 2015 budget, I think it was the 2015, it might have been 14, in any case, we had budgeted to refund $269,000 as a transmission rider. We could have reserved that. Like, that would have been the time to implement a strategy like this. We could have reserved it instead of refunded and then use that as a buffer.
It was a big enough number that it would have been a great place to start.
You were safe all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Well, I remember we had that discussion, whether you do transparency, no transparency, use it.
And I appreciate council's decision that, the discussion was, is that we're collecting it as a flow-through and we've over-collected. So we give it back. But the problem is, we create volatility in billing.
Instead of doing a month to month, could we do a quarterly? Would it give us a little bit better idea?
Well, like I said, we have the option to actually amend the bylaw quarterly, but I'm, I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's the way we want to go. Because we're not, we're not reducing the volatility of the bill.
No.
So if that's one of the things we want to do this for, is so if all of a sudden the things spike and we should have to put on a $5 rider, but we got $200,000 in the bank, we just cover that with that amount we reserved and the end user doesn't have to get a rider.
Reducing the volatility is the only reason.
Yeah, right.
That's the purpose of doing it.
Right.
Yeah, but billing is a way to.
What we need to do tonight is look at the motion that we made and rescind that motion or put another motion in place.
Well, there's actually a little bit more to it than that.
Yes.
If I may, that's a big piece of it. We have a scheduled public hearing on this bylaw in two weeks. But if we intend to change the numbers in the bylaw, I would suggest it gets pulled from the public hearing. Or we issue the public hearing based on what's in the bylaw and maybe we go with that rate for the month of January.
Right.
And then we amend the bylaw and we enact that the following month. But we do have to consider that we're giving out information based on the draft bylaw as it reads right now. So I don't think it's, I think it would be bad practice to change the parameters to which we advertise the bylaw.
I agree.
At this point.
I agree.
Well, how many people have actually requested?
Yeah, we haven't given out, I mean, Hawk and prepared a sheet that breaks it all down. We haven't seen a lot. We could tweak it before first reading and then present that bylaw. It would just be different than if anyone had anything previously, but it would be very few people.
Council, bounce, if you want to.
Yeah, I've got a question regarding the transmission. I'm trying to go back a year, about a year and a half or so, when AltaLink decided that they were no longer going to complete that transmission line down at the border, we had a rider on our bills then. Has that rider been lifted? Or are we still paying that rider?
You only have a credit rider right now.
Pardon me?
You only have a credit rider based on that, what you determined to credit back to the community last year.
So is that part of this $99,000?
No. No, that's simply based on what we collected that we didn't pay through Fortis to AltaLink, well, to ISO.
Too much revenue.
So what do we do with that money? Do we credit it back? You were talking about here, that's part of the AltaLink situation?
I don't believe that the town ever had to pay into a specific rider for AltaLink infrastructure. It probably played into the overall rate. I have to think it played big time into the overall rate.
It was a separate rider.
But I don't believe there was ever a rider for that infrastructure.
Okay, it's pooled.
Yeah, it's all pooled across the province, yeah.
And the costs are averaged across the whole province.
Okay.
All right. So if you understand, Jeff, at this point, what we have council need to do is to bring this draft bylaw to a first reading.
Maybe. Would it be the, would it be the interest of council that we brought back an amended bylaw that kept the $99,000 to be reserved?
I think maybe we would be, how does council feel about that?
Yes.
Get us on the right unanimous on that.
Okay, so I think maybe that's the direction we want to go.
While unconventional, I think what you could do next week, because we've advertised the public hearing on the bylaw, pass first reading, have the public hearing. Don't pass any more reading.
So it's in the timeframe that we.
Right, so you have first reading when you have the public hearing.
Next week.
Yeah, well, two weeks.
Okay, all right.
If you like that version of the bylaw, I mean, we need to go look at that and look at the implications on everything for that too, but.
Okay, so we'll send it back to, in your court.
That we redo the bylaw to not give the credit rider back? It shouldn't impact budget because we're just going to reserve it, right? So it shouldn't hurt, hit the budget. Okay, we'll look at that and bring you back an alternate bylaw before the public hearing.
Council, please.
So with that being the case, does that mess up our January a little bit? Because we won't then pass it until December.
It might, but we're talking about probably not a lot of money in the scheme of things. I mean, so we may end up reserving 92,000 or 91,000, it may be a little different. We'll have to look at that. The letter of the law would probably say, you could pass all three readings on this next week. If you first reading, have your public hearing and pass second, third reading. You could.
If you don't have.
You're not required to have a public hearing on this bylaw anyway. You're doing it to put it out to the public.
So you will have, you will have a public hearing, which is more than what you legally.
Yep, you're not required.
Required.
But it's a great idea.
So which means that if there is really no significant input, then we at council could pass rebylaw. It never has been what we have done as council except for some administrative thing. If you feel like you want to make an exception to that one, that will be up to you.
But we are legally in the.
It would be a public hearing, I mean.
Yeah, oh yeah.
So already, we would already have done the public hearing. Which means that we've already have asked for the input and the feedback.
Yeah, just a question, you know, as we went through this earlier, you know, we were, you know, 2014 rates, then, you know, down for 2015 rates and then up a little bit for 2015. Now, so.
We'll need to redo the information.
This is going to change that and is going to bring those rates back up.
Up 2%?
I think what you're going to see is they're going to look almost the same as 2014 because there was a $4 rider in 2014.
That's what I'm wondering, yeah, where we're going to end up.
Yeah, I think you're going to see them almost in parity to 2014.
Back to 2011.
That's my guess.
Council, please.
Yeah, so for the sake of clarity then, if someone were to ask about this new direction that we're talking about heading and just basically say, if you didn't do that, the implication would be that my rates would continue to just kind of jump around in a very random and unpredictable, yeah, unpredictable way versus what the reason you're trying to do what you're trying to do is to solidify my rates and make it a little bit smoother through from one year to another. As a shock absorber. As a shock absorber, yeah. I mean, it's not like the town is using it as revenue, you're just trying to balance out my rates.
We would simply hold the money to try and balance volatility in the market.
Right.
So it's never going to be expended on Jeff's salary or council remuneration, right? It's being held to buffer volatility.
If we have huge volatility, we're still going to have to tweak the rates and keep up with that.
So, yeah, let me be clear on that. This would not be intended to mitigate future rate increases. This is intended to mitigate riders. So the rate's going to change based on what AUC approves and the rate's going to move. Thankfully, the last three years, we see it proposed to be static, that's great. But if the rates are approved to increase, the rates are going to increase. But the ride, we're trying to mitigate the rider, is what we're trying to do because that jumps all over the place.
There's nothing we can do about it.
The rate is predictable because volatility is going to go up 3%, that's what it is.
You have no choice but to flow through that rate. Simple as that.
Yeah. All right, so council, if I understand, we will not pass a motion on this draft bylaw. We will ask administration to revise this bylaw to start to look at reserve for rider, the transmission rider, to stabilize the rates in the future and then we will.
And please, council, don't feel like you have to rush this through. I just want that to be clear. Worst case scenario, it starts in February.
One month later, it's not the end of the world.
It's not the end of the world at all.
It's not going to affect our budget.
Well, we will be adjusted to budget.
Yeah, we will make the reserve amount so that it does not affect the budget. That's what we'll have to do.
Right.
To doctor that reserve amount.
So if it is five or six dollars less, so be it.
So be it.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we do it pretty good and I think we need a little bit of a break at this point. Can we do a five to seven minute break?
Your turn. Yeah, I'll move to a.
One break.
For five minutes.
Thank you, all right.
You want to vote on that?